Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator/controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials, impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator/controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, its life well-run.
Good morning. It is Tuesday, April 17th, at 8:30 a.m. It's my pleasure to call to order the Finance and Fiscal Resources Committee meeting. I'd like to thank fellow commissioners who are here, welcome staff, public, and other commissioners who are attending the meeting this morning. Thank you for taking your time on this slippery April morning to come to the meeting and learn more about what's going on in the county. We will start with public comment. Is there any public that would like to address the Finance and Fiscal Resources Committee this morning? Okay, seeing none, we will close public comment. That will bring us to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Moved.
Moved and supported. Any items have to be pulled? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. That brings us to item three from the Bureau of Equalization. Wayman?
Sure. This is a request to the Board to adopt the 2018 Equalization Report. The Bureau of Equalization has completed its review of the 2018 assessment rolls of the 21 townships and the nine cities of Kent County. The Bureau of Equalization recommends adoption of the state equalization value of the real and personal property in the total combined amount of $27.1 billion. This is an increase of 4.7% from the 2017 SEV of $25.9 billion. The state taxable value of the real and personal property is $22.89 billion, which is an increase of 4.81% over the 2017 STV, state taxable value, of $21.84 billion. Equalized values have been prepared in accordance with MCL 211.34 as amended and in time to be submitted to the State Tax Commission by the required deadline of May 1, 2018.
Is there a motion to approve?
So.
Is there support?
Support.
Okay, moved and supported. And why don't we have, Matt, come on up. It looks like you might have spent a little bit of time prepping these materials. So why don't you take a few minutes and give us some highlights and share some thoughts.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to do that. And actually, I'm here representing a staff of 15 who works very hard on this. And joining me today is Brenda Ritchie, the Deputy Director of Equalization as well. And I'd just like to thank her for the effort that she's put into the report as well this When I started my role in 2007 as interim director, we were entering into a period where I was able to say that my predecessors, it was my predecessors' privilege to say that the SEV and the taxable value in Kent County had grown by a billion dollars. And then in my very first report as Equalization Director, it was the beginning of the Great Recession. And I said at that time, it was my responsibility to tell you that the SEV and the taxable value had gone down by almost a billion dollars. Well, this year, we are at that point again, an inflection point, where the SEV and the taxable value both increased over a billion dollars this year in Kent County. That is a reflection of many things. We all know that we have been in a period of recovery. It's been, this is in fact, our fifth year of growth after four years of consecutive declines during the Great Recession. And so what I'd like to do is just give you a little bit of highlights about the changes from 2017 to 2018, and talk about the factors that have gone into this year's report. Now, as we know, the state equalized value and the taxable value are separated due to the mechanics of Proposal A. And this year, the SEV growth grew by 4.7%. However, the taxable value growth grew by 4.81%. So one of the initial questions that you may have is, well, how can that be? And the reason for that is, is that because we are in a period of rising values at this moment, we are experiencing uncappings for properties that have long been uncapped. So you may have an individual parcel, let's say, that is worth, let's say, $150,000, but it's been capped for a number of years. Well, and that property becomes uncapped, the capped value is released, and now, if there was a big gap, you can have a significantly higher increase on an individual property that is far in excess of the SEV growth for that property. And if you multiply that, of course, across the quarter million parcels that are across the county, that is how that dynamic takes place. The other dynamic, of course, is that we've had new construction. So we've had a lot of property that's added new to the roll. So with the combination of the property that's been added new to the roll, and also the properties that are the uncapping, that's how you get the dynamic of the taxable value rising faster than the underlying SEV.
Matt, quick question on that. Is the uncapping the sale of the property?
That's correct.
Okay.
Whenever a property is transferred, then the assessment cap is lifted, and the property is assessed at its state equalized value in the subsequent year after a transfer.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Do you have a question, Commissioner Bukowski?
Yeah, I mean, of the 250,000 parcels, do you have a ballpark, how many are transferred each year?
It usually ranges somewhere between 4% and 10%. Yep. So there's a fair amount of turnover, you know, somewhere in the central Tennessee, right around five to seven. Depending on the areas, the hotter areas will have higher turnovers. The largest percentage increase this year was in Byron Township, 7.75% increase in their taxable value. The lowest increase this year in 2018 was 1.5%, and that was in Cedar Springs. Now, so while the valuation is up, and the taxable value is up, and I've already discussed the impacts of Proposal A with the limitations based on the CPI. The CPI was 2.1% this year. So the CPI comes into play with the determination of taxable value. The CPI also does come into play with the application of the Headley Amendment. If you recall, we did have a Headley rollback last year, and we will also have a Headley rollback this year that will impact us on the growth in that tax base. So what that means is, is that our maximum allowable millage rate is going to be decreased. And in fact, we will no longer have the cushion between our maximum allowable millage rate and the actual millage that we have levied historically. So our, for instance, in our allocated operating, our maximum allowable millage rate going forward in 2018, we levied last year 4.2803. This year, the maximum allowable millage rate that we will be able to levy is 4.2708. So the cushion that has been referred to, or the gap between our maximum allowable and what the Headley maximum is, that has now been eradicated because of the growth in the underlying tax base. So the Headley Amendment is coming into play on both sides of the equation, or the Headley Amendment is coming into play on the millage side, and the Proposal A limitation affects the valuation side. Yes, Commissioner?
On the Headley side, what is that impact dollar-wise?
It's about a half a million dollars in what we otherwise would have been able to levy. It's about a $500,000 impact to the overall levy that the county would otherwise have been able to allocate had the Headley not been in place. Yep. Yes?
Will be an increase, because there's been an increase in taxable value.
There will be an increase, of course, that, you know, refer back to the 4.81% increase in the taxable value. It's just that there's now a limitation, and that maximum allowable millage rate will roll back if we continue to see growth in our tax base. To the extent that the tax base exceeds the rate of inflation, now that circuit breaker of Headley will begin to kick in for the county. And that is something that we really haven't had in a systematic way here at the county. So this is new, and it's, you know, the county, we've heard about it with a lot of other taxing authorities and taxing jurisdictions over the years. That moment of reckoning with the Headley is here for us now. So the only way that we'll be able to continue to levy at existing rates is by looking at the choices of what we do with the millage moving forward. There's no additional cushion or leverage that the Administrator's Office and the Board of Commissioners has if they choose to levy millage on their own.
But we will be recognized, and I'm sure the Administrator and the Finance Department are looking at how much extra we will be getting in taxes. Is that in the neighborhood of a couple million, or?
In terms of, I'm sorry, the question?
Well, the increase in taxable value, what amount will that bring? Do you know that yet?
What does that amount mean?
Well, the increase, the increase levy is about, I guess, six million. I'd really rather defer to Marvin on that side of things, but just looking at what we ...
They may be jumping the gun, but we're in the budget cycle. Yeah, but I guess when we're talking about the 500,000 that we could have gotten, if it wasn't the Headley, we have to recognize we're getting a big chunk.
Question, the increase in taxable value as compared to the budget?
Yeah.
That's maybe $1.5 million.
So that's not this real huge windfall?
No, no. Yeah, I guess that's what I wanted to know.
Yes, Commissioner Morgan?
Out of the chair, thank you. Matt, so I need to go back and get my head around the fact that, okay, so you're talking about, we're going to have the Headley, you know, trigger this year. Now, you said that gap is gone. Now, what happens if there's additional millage added to the county structure? What happens then?
Well, additional millage is just that. It's additional millage. The Headley applies to existing millages that are in place. And it just, what it does is it prevents the existing millages in place from exceeding that rate of inflation.
Okay, and once ...
Additional millage, you know, additional ballot measures that come on, those are all.
And once they're on the books, that could be formulated into the Headley formula from then on, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I needed.
Yeah.
Matt, does it impact the special ones that have passed?
Yes.
Yes. So will they also see decreases?
Yes.
Will they also see adjustments? Yeah.
It's not some last year, right?
Correct, but it ...
It also affected us slightly last year.
Yeah. I mean, it's not really a decrease. It's not the maximum, again, voters said tax us at a mill, but because that mill generates too much, we can really only tax at .99. So we're still getting more net, but we're not getting as much as approved by the individual millage, but the voters approved Headley, I think when Roger was in high school, or maybe even older. But anyways, but anyways, the voters a long time ago said cap growth.
It's a good distinction, Commissioner, because the Headley is a limitation on the growth.
Right.
It's not a reduction, it's just a limitation on the growth.
Right.
The key point that I was trying to impress, and it ties into the valuation side of things, which is really the subject of your approval today, is that based on this growth, when I come back in October for the apportionment session, I will be reporting to you that based on the growth that I'm reporting to you right now, that we will approve and send on to the state for the final equalized values, that growth is now, we're joining the Headley club in terms of those taxing authorities that are now having, based on that growth, are having their millage rates capped by the Headley formula.
That was something.
And just quick ...
Go ahead.
And Headley's year-over-year, it doesn't take into account that for X number of years we had decreasing values, where Headley's silent, and so, in essence, you can never catch up if you're, because the years that there was inflation and we had deflation in the value of properties, where, and then we're capped at inflation going forward, we're always going to be, at least from my perspective, we're behind in where we could have been. And Headley never allows you to catch up unless you have a vote of the people.
Right. There is no such thing as a Headley roll-up. It's only a rollback.
Okay.
And that's by design.
They, really? They anticipated that there would be times of deflation and you could never catch up?
That there's, you don't get to make up the gap in deflationary periods. The Headley Amendment is a limitation on taxable value. It's not ...
Correct.
Protecting taxpayer.
Okay, well, that's history lesson, history study.
Yes, Commissioner Mast.
It might be helpful for the Administrator to somehow put together a part of some sort that says, here's what it is now, here's what we're going to do. All the special millages too. Probably that's awfully hard.
Sure, we can do that.
But I think in one sheet or two sheets, that would be helpful for us as we talk to them, particularly as we now are investigating other members.
Yeah, we can provide you that.
I mean, it's just so complex.
Sure, it is very complicated.
Okay.
The essence of the property tax is really two sides of the equation, right? There's a value and there's a rate. And so I've tried to address both of those, and how we are in a, we are in a rising real estate environment. Our value has grown, and I see essentially more of the same ahead as we look forward to the 2019. So I think we're in a growth in the coming year. Happy to answer any questions and move forward from there.
Keep it coming, Commissioner Morgan.
Last question.
Oh, don't limit yourself.
Hey, Matt, now, is there still that three-year lag in property taxes before we really, it really becomes, when I was chair, we were talking about during the recession that there was always a three-year lag in property taxes, where if you had an income tax, it was pretty much, and you had an increase in that, it was pretty much immediate. But there's always a little bit of a lag in the property tax. Does that still hold true?
Yes, that's true. We always like to say we follow the market, we don't predict it. We are a lagging indicator in economic terms. So the sales studies that we do, study the two years, the last study that was included in this particular realm was in March of, March 31st of 2017. So next, we're just finishing up our study period for the next year's assessment cycle at this period.
Thanks.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Bukowski?
No question. I just want to make sure you hear my compliment, you know, with 250,000 moving parts, in the sense of every parcel is changing directions and all that stuff, to you and your staff and all your partners in the townships and cities. This is awesome, and, you know, it's one of those things that I trust, I believe it's a fair process, and that's what we need to keep doing for, you know, which keeps the lights on here and other places. So thank you for all that work. So.
Thanks, Matt. All right. Thank you, Matt. With that, any other comments, questions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. That brings us to item number four from Fiscal Services, the 2017 IT General Fund Budget Amendment, the CGI Financial and Human Resources Software Maintenance Payment. Wayman?
Yes, this is a request to approve a transfer of $944,800 from the 2017 IT budget to the 2017 Transfer-Out budget in the general fund. Per contractual agreement, the 2017 IT general fund budget included $944,800 for the annual maintenance payment to CGI for the financial and human resources software. According to the county auditor and Gatsby Statement Number 51, the software must be capitalized and expensed in the debit service fund. It is requested that $944,800 be transferred from the 2017 IT budget to the 2017 Transfer-Out budget in the general fund. The funds will then be transferred to the debit service fund where the annual maintenance payments will be expensed. No additional general funds appropriation is required.
Is there a motion to approve? And support?
Support.
Thank you. Questions, comments, and discussion? Yes, Commissioner Morgan?
Quick question. Sure. So this is just a housekeeping reporting mechanism because of the Gatsby?
Correct.
I see Marvin nodding his head yes, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone else? Seeing nothing further, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. That brings us to item number five from Fiscal Services, the 2018 IT General Fund Budget Amendment. Wayman?
Yeah, this is a similar one, but it's for 2018. This is a request to approve a transfer of $944,810 from the 2018 IT budget to the 2018 Transfer-Out budget in the general fund. Per contractual agreement, the 2018 IT general fund budget included $944,810 for the annual maintenance payment to CGI for the financial and human resources software. According to the county auditor and Gatsby Statement Number 51, software must be capitalized and expensed in the debit service fund. It is requested that $944,810 be transferred from the 2018 IT budget to the 2018 Transfer-Out budget in the general fund. The funds will then be transferred to the debit service fund where the annual maintenance payments will be expensed. No additional general funds appropriation is required.
Is there a motion to approve?
Support.
Okay, moved and supported. Questions, comments, and discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. We go to item number six, Kent County Community Action, City of Grand Rapids Lead Hazard Control Community Development Grant for 2018. Wayman?
Yes, this is a request to accept and appropriate $49,999 in funding from the City of Grand Rapids to the 2018 Kent County Community Action Fund Budget, and authorize the Board Chair or designate to execute the grant agreement and approve grant extensions and changes within 15% of the original ward. The City of Grand Rapids has made $49,999 available in funding for the Health Department to be a partner in a Michigan Department of Health Human Services Lead Hazard Control Grant to support work outside of Grand Rapids. The objectives of the grant are to remediate lead paint hazards in pre-1978 housing and to reduce the elevated blood levels in young children. Kent County Community Action will provide remediation project management services for up to 10 properties located outside of Grand Rapids. The grant will support up to .5 FTE of a Housing Rehabilitation Specialist position. Total cost of salary and benefits for this position is $43,265. The remaining $6,734 will be used to support operating costs of supplies, travel, and overhead. The grant term is January 10, 2018, through September 30, 2018. Assistant Corporate Counsel has reviewed and approved the agreement as to form.
Is there a motion to approve? Is there support?
Support.
Okay, moved and supported. Questions, comments, and discussion? Commissioner Hennessy?
I would appreciate more of an explanation, you know, of what this is all about. The thing that struck me immediately was that we've got $50,000 of, you know, salary and overhead costs, and we're talking 10 properties. So you've already got $10,000 in administrative costs for each of these properties. We're talking remediation, not abatement, in terms of the wordage.
Hi, Commissioner Hennessy. Good question. So this fund is from the state, it's CHIP money, so it's Medicaid money. So the Health Department will, when there's an elevated blood level outside of the City of Grand Rapids, notify Community Action, who then will have the Housing Rehab Specialist. The Housing Rehab Specialist has potential other funding to help with the remediation of the lead or abatement of the lead in the house through the Community Development Block Grant Funds and the home rehab dollars that we use there. So what we've tried to do with this program is to streamline with elevated blood levels. At the Health Department, referrals will then come from that. And if it's within the City of Grand Rapids, the City of Grand Rapids will respond with its funding opportunities. And if it's outside the City of Grand Rapids, except for Wyoming, Community Action will respond. And then we'll have CHIP grant dollars and/or Community Development Block grant dollars, or hopefully other funds that will come down the pike eventually that we're, CHAC, you know, is going to be doing, learning about, things like that. So this is the first step in this process. This grant got off to a slow start because of the way the state process works through the state. We anticipate, though, that next year there'll be additional funding available, so we're trying to get our foot in the door. It's a five-year federal grant that the state received. The money will come here and we'll get, and hopefully more money next year, and then be able to service more homes. So this is the start of this effort, and we're hoping to tie and use other dollars too, which, this is one of the reasons Susan's here, is that we have other grant programs in the, like, weatherization programs too, that we might be able to support a house with as well outside of Grand Rapids. So we're really trying to figure out how to tie these dollars together, so we get more bang for the buck. And this will provide project management, because there's a lot of requirements when you are abating and remediating lead. So I hope that's helpful.
So you're basically saying the $50,000 will not just cover 10 properties, but it's going to be ...
We're going to leverage it.
We're going to leverage it.
Actually, the $50,000 is not labor and materials. It's just the support.
It's administrative. It's money that's not actually going to people.
Right, but we're going to project manage the units, and the city is going to pay for contracting. We're keeping that money. The labor and material and the lead remediation dollars are being held at the city, and we're just supervising the project. So there's over, I think it's a one ... So there's over, I think it's a 1.5 million for remediation of the lead homes.
The feds gave money to the state of Michigan for lead abatement, okay? We, as a community, said we're going to partner and tie the money together, and the City of Grand Rapids has expertise in doing the testing and other things to determine if a house has lead in it, because they've historically received large grants from HUD. They have 1.5 million in this grant for this year. We're getting $50,000 of it to project manage houses outside of Grand Rapids, where we have relationships, expertise, things like that. We will then be able to say, we can spend the chip money for labor and materials, as Susan described, which is the hard work, that bank account, if you will, is still at the City of Grand Rapids, and we can draw off of that for out-county projects. We can draw off of our Community Development Block Grant Funds, if that's appropriate, for the remediation. We can look at weatherization dollars to pay for certain things. And our staff, up to 5.5 FTE, will be the project manager for that, and trying to work with all these different funding sources to put a portfolio together to help the client. And so we're trying to leverage all these funding sources to serve the family. Does that make some sense?
Okay, Commissioner Morgan?
Phil, did you get your question answered?
I think it strikes me that there's an awful lot of money going at the top level, whether it be at the City of Grand Rapids or here, and it's not actually getting to the people who need the help in their...
Well, I think they're trying to set up an umbrella.
But I think you're setting up a system and an umbrella, and that will probably serve us better in the long run.
Yeah, and the other challenge we do have is that with HUD and lead, there is a lot of administrative clearances and requirements, and it just, the reality of is that it costs administrative dollars, and we're trying to be smart about how to keep those limited, as always, but that's just the reality of getting access to the funds.
Actually, I am very glad that we're, you know, really moving forward and to implement the lead task force and to have this money to, you give us a good boost, start toward the whole thing. So I don't mean to be really critical, because this is a, this is a start, and it's one we can build from.
I didn't take it as that. I mean, we're trying to explain a complicated system.
Bukowski understands it right away.
Wait, Commissioner Morgan, are you, do you have a question? Go ahead.
Matthew, so part of this is there are other homes in the out-county that are going to need to be remediated or addressed, so we're kind of partnering with the city to leverage the money. I'm really happy to hear that, you know, because CDBG money may be available in some of these, you know, the townships or outlying cities to partner with that. So I think it's just one big leverage effort to get this done, but I'm glad to see that we're expanding our scope, you know, because there are farmhouses and stuff, houses that were built out-county before 1978.
Commissioner Kornick just whispered in our ear that there's houses in Plainfield Township in his district that were built in the 40s, Cedar Springs, Sparta, Ada, has, I mean, there's older homes, Byron Center has older homes. So when they're identified and then they're of income means that we can use these dollars, we will be working with those homes.
Happy to see you looking at the CDBG programs.
Commissioner Bukowski?
Yeah, I mean, what I heard Commissioner Hennessy pointing at is, if we're only working with 10 houses, that, you know, it's $5,000 per house total cost, you know, halftime person is 1,000 hours, so it's 100 hours of leveraging and paperwork per house. So it just seemed like, again, I don't know if it's HUD's rules that needs some reforming or something, but that's the cost of fixing a house just on the paperwork side. I'll leave it at that. My real question is, is this new capacity, or is this just funding somebody we already have with some new dollars?
This is funding somebody who's already on staff, and depending on how much workload comes through, we'll have to evaluate over time how to move forward. But right now, it's somebody on staff. It's not a new position.
All right, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. So then that will take us to Commissioner Miscellaneous. Is there any Commissioner Miscellaneous this morning? Yes, Commissioner Bukowski?
I just want to take a moment, because, you know, we have to toot our horn, and, you know, we always talk about local collaboration and hidden in the consent agenda, the City of Rockford asking to be part of our pooled investment. That's a tiny little example, again, of us doing things right as a county. Again, if I'm not saying it, Roger's too humble, and so I'm going to say again, thank you, Wayman, for continuing to lead that. Thank you to the treasurer. People keep, we keep working together, doing great things. The sled thing is the same thing. So I got to toot the horn on Tax Day.
Okay.
Well said.
Anyone else for Commissioner Miscellaneous? All right, seeing none, we will go to adjournment. We will adjourn until the next meeting date of May 1st at 8:30. Okay, great. So.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
Ami Kent County.
Somos Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
Oh, yeah.